Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Board of Commissioners, Bowling Green, Kentucky, regular meeting, City Hall, June sixth, twenty twenty-three, at four thirty. We're gonna begin with an invocation and pledge allegiance, and I'll lead you. If everybody will stand with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being just as for all. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you that we can come together as a city, as commissioners, city management, citizens, just to put forth our community and what we're gonna do, how we're going to take care of each other, how we're going to put forth the budget for the next year. And we just thank you for the decisions that we make, and we put them in your name. And we just thank you for your blessings that you continue to give this community. And we just thank you for the summer. We pray for the safety of our community. We pray for the safety of our employees. And we just thank you for the blessings that we have, that we have one of the safest cities in the world. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Buh.
Thank you, everybody. Mrs. Jackson, will you please provide a roll call?
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Mayor Alcott.
Here. Mr. Mizel, do you have any comments to make?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a few. Uh, we've got a lot going on, uh, next couple of weeks. Uh, just wanna, uh, remind everybody, we are celebrating our two-hundredth anniversary for our Bowling Green Police Department. Uh, I think you all were at the ceremony at the, at the park the other day. Very nice. Uh, it's hard to believe eighteen twenty-three to two thousand twenty-three, uh, Bowling Green Police Department come a long way. So, uh, also, this week, uh, is the Duncan Hines days. Uh, if you haven't heard, surely you've heard by now, it's, it's this week. So, we've got, uh, a busy week ahead, and, uh, everything's going, going smoothly for that. Last thing I'll mention is if there is anybody in the audience who wants to make public comments, please sign the register in the back corner of the room, and we'll take those up at the end of the regular session.
Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mizel. All right. First item is approval of our minutes from regular meeting, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Some move.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Comments, questions? None? Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty twenty-three dash one oh one.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Johnny Teague to the position of police officer in the police department.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
Have an opportunity to, uh, hire, uh, an additional police officer tonight. Uh, he's a, a lateral transfer coming up from Florida, and I'd like, uh, Lori Gray, our HR manager, to come up and make recommendation.
Lori.
Good evening. I'm here this evening to request the approval of the appointment of Johnny Teague, uh, to the position of police officer in the police department. Uh, Mr. Teague is a certified officer, as, um, as Mr. Mizel just mentioned, and he is coming to us from Palm Bay Police Department in Palm Bay, Florida. He previously worked thirteen years for the Shively Police Department in Shively, Kentucky. Uh, Johnny is a graduate of Butler Traditional High School in Louisville, Kentucky, and holds an associate's degree in computer engineering technology from Louisville Technical Institute in Louisville, Kentucky. Mr. Teague is here this evening, and he has some family members with him. Uh, if you let me know if you have any questions.
Hey, thank you, Lori. Teague, you wanna stand up and introduce your family that you have with you? Well, welcome to Bowling Green, Kentucky. We look forward for you to join our police force. All right. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations. Municipal order number twenty twenty-three dash one oh two.
Municipal order approving the probationary employment of Jacob Owens to the position of police cadet two in the police department.
So moved.
Second. By Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
Another great opportunity to hire a police cadet two, which will put him in the next, uh, academy class. I'd like to ask Lori to come back up and introduce, uh, Mr. Owens.
Hello again. So, I'm here now to request the approval of the appointment of Jacob Owens to the position of police cadet two. Uh, this position, uh, will be in line for our class six that will start later this year. Uh, Mr. Owens, um, is a graduate from Bedford High School in Bedford, Massachusetts, and Mid, Midsex Community College, and associate's degree in criminal justice. He is here this evening. Uh, if you'll let me know if you have any questions.
All right. Well, let's say hello to Jacob. Hello, Jacob. How are you? We're good. So, look forward to, uh, having you become a cadet and eventually a police officer, so... Do you have any family with you tonight? All right. Well, you're gonna join the family of blue. How about that? All right. Commissioners?
I, um, we received your message.
Mrs. Jackson's on it. All right. Well, let's make this official, Jacob. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, Jacob. Municipal order number twenty twenty-three dash one oh three.
Municipal order accepting the Intermodal Transportation Authority, Inc., fiscal year twenty twenty-four operating budget.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Mr. Mizel.
As you all know, we are, uh, we have an agreement with the ITA that we approve all of their budgets and any land sales that are below twenty-five thousand an acre, uh, pursuant to the, the bond issues we've done up there, the general obligation bonds. Before you tonight is the twenty, FY twenty-four operating budget presented by the ITA. Uh, Ms. Meredith Rosansky is with us here tonight and can give you a quick overview of what's in the budget. Uh, looks like about a three point three percent increase, uh, from, from prior year, and, uh, I'll hand it off to, to Meredith.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. Um, you'll see on the front page, the segment of operations, we're gonna flip over to the subsequent schedules that kinda give you the breakdown that all rolled up into that, and I'll just kind of hit the highlights. On, um, revenues, you'll see that our rental income decreased significantly. Um, we are down to two houses, um, left, um, under ownership of the ITA. When the park was first formed, there were several homes that we, um, had to purchase at the time in order to get the land associated with them. As we filled up the park, those homes have been demolished and, um, replaced with the, um, businesses that are out there, and so that to say we're down to two left. Um, on wage assessment, you'll see a budgeted significant decrease. So, the transpark itself is divided into ten TIF areas. So, there's a one and a half percent wage assessment that's assessed on everyone who works in the park to help fund the bonds, um, that were originally issued for it and the new bond issue. And so, the first major TIF area, which is where Bowling Green Metal Forming, Carter Lumber, and where, um, Stryker Logistics was located, that will sunset in September of this year. That is our largest sort of contributor to the TIF, um, to date, and so that is why there's that decrease there. Um, property tax will stay relatively the same. Um, and I will call to your attention to the increase in interest income. Um, as a result of the Envision project, the state funded forty-six million dollars' worth of water and sewer infrastructure, and so the way that worked is they fronted the money to the ITA, so I have a separate account for that forty-six million dollars, which we are allowed to earn interest on, and we are very hopeful that the interest will cover the increase in costs since they awarded that funding. Um, but that project is underway, and we are spending down, but we do anticipate still having a significant amount of interest income coming in for the new year. And the lease revenue, what that represents is the principal payments that are due on the original bond issue. Um, so while the city pays that amount, um, we as the ITA report that as it sort of flow through income. And so, you'll see principal and interest payments on expense in just a moment. Um, and then grant income, that hundred and fifty thousand dollars is from, um, the state. So, all TBA counties, um, they pay a tax to the state, and, um, several years ago, they passed the law to remit that to the counties under TBA for economic development projects. Um, we were the entity designated by Warren County to receive those funds, and so that's what those grant funds are for. And we don't budget as a rule for land transactions, and because we don't know from year to year what transactions will close, um, so from a conservative standpoint, we don't budget any income or expenses related to that. Um, if you'll turn the page over on the expense side, not a lot of changes there. And the management fee increase is the three percent increase allowed per our contract with the city and the county. Um, professional fees, that runs high because we've had with these, especially with these bigger projects, a lot of legal work that goes into them, as well as a lot of engineering work to make, to prove that the site will work for their project. So, we expect as we complete the OI project, the Envision project, um, those, for the upcoming fiscal year, will still remain a little high. And other than that, everything's pretty much in line for this year, but again, um, that cost the land sold in the current year. Uh, the reason why that's such a big number is we had the land donation of the first tract to Envision, so we did close on that property transaction, so we have to take that off the books, but it was a donation approved by the board, so there's no income associated with it. Um, the next page, you see the, um, projected principal and interest payments on the two bond issues from the original bonds, um, so that's taken straight off the schedules that we receive from the city. Um, and then on the last page, you'll see, um, projected bond fund expenditures, so that's related to the new bonds, um, that you approved a couple of years ago, that we are spending down in relation to building out the remainder of the park. And so, all of those schedules roll back up, um, onto the front page. Um, the only thing that's on the front page that's not on those schedules is the depreciation. I mean, our major item for depreciation that the ITA owns is the rail spur, um, that's in the park. And so, overall, um, like I said, the twenty-two million dollars that's reflected on there is really sort of a flow-through from the city and the county, um, as well as the principal and interest payments on the bonds, and so when we add back in sort of your contribution, the net is two point six. Um, the ITA board, um, did vote to approve this, and we respectfully request your approval as well.
Thank you very much, Meredith. Um, for this rundown, the intermodal transportation, um, is vital, and this has been integral to our community for our growth and how we're growing, so, um, we're proud of the ITA, and we're proud of the work that's continued to be accomplished by the chamber, so thank you. I'm grateful for you all.
We definitely couldn't do it without the partnership. Um, I give a lot of credit to Judge Buchanan for the vision of this and for the city and the county coming together to fund it, to make it a reality. Um, we, as a community, I just can't imagine where we would be if we didn't have the transpark, so...
Commissioners?
I'll, I'll ditto what the mayor said. Thank you very much. I really enjoy serving on the board and learning a lot about the ITA and how it's really impacting it. Yesterday, I was at an event where the county judge from Edmondson County was just gushing over what's going on there, because that's going, you know, all, it, it affects everybody in our region, and so he's, he's pretty excited about the expansion and the new businesses that are coming, the manufacturing battery company, and what that's gonna do for his community. So, I, I just think it's, it's more regional and, and, uh, most appreciated your hard work.
Haven't been out there, go out there. The, the, the shell for, um, BG one for Envision is up, and it's impressive, so...
All right. Well, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Meredith. No further questions. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG twenty twenty-three dash tens, our first reading is non-binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing five point nine three acres from LI Light Industrial to PUD Planned Unit Development, located at one-ten, one-fifty, and one-eighty Center Street, zero, one-twelve, one-thirty-four, and one-forty College Street, zero, East Second Avenue, and three-zero-one East Riverview Drive, presently owned by Beach Holdings LLC.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
The, uh, Pl- Planning and Zoning Board met on May fourth, and, uh, they had seven members of your eight, uh, present for this case. There was a seven-oh, uh, recommendation, uh, to approve this rezoning from the Light Industrial to the Planned Unit Development on Center, College, uh, Second, and Riverview Drive. This is the development that you saw in the Daily News just, uh, a week or two ago. Uh, Beach Holdings LLC, uh, Mr. Patrick Reynolds and Mr. Kelly Coleman. Uh, this is gonna be a really great project. You can see some, uh, drawings in your packet of what, what's, uh, what they're, got planned in that area, uh, along, just across the street from the river, uh, where we'll be, uh, attempting to, to build a park here pretty soon. So, uh, Rachel Hurt is here today, today in place of Mr. Peterson to answer any questions you might have on this rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Yeah, it, this is an enhancement to this area and community, um, and I appreciated their, um, work to keep some of the integrity of this community as well, and I, I think that's important, but they're willing to do that and, and time-phase this as well. So, I think this is, um, gonna enhance our vision indefinitely. I'm, I'm amazed that this project is, is getting, um, the capital and investment that I believe is gonna be successful.
I don't know if you know the details, Rachel, but I see here that there's a distillery and a, and a tasting, brewery tasting. I know that they can have a tasting, eh, away from their regular distillery, but is that a standalone distillery? Like, are we gonna be back on the Bourbon Trail?
They haven't given us the details of that quite yet. Um, I think everything right now is still in a conceptual phase. These are the uses that they would really like to see that are incorporated into the development, um, but I think there's still some research to be done on the Old Tobacco Warehouse and just what might be feasible as far as repurposing that building, uh, but I think there are exciting things to come, uh, so it, it, it might be, so...
It's really cool they're keeping the, the tobacco warehouse. That's gonna be really, really sweet. Looking forward to it.
Hey, Rachel. I don't think I ever got to meet you, so it's great to finally meet you. I've seen a lot of times, you know, on the, the planning and zoning videos, um, I've looked at the, the renderings, and I do believe like what the, what the mayor has said, that it's gonna bring a lot of revenue, and the rate of return over time is gonna be something great for our city, and developing that riverfront is gonna be beautiful over time. My only question, and looking at these renderings, it doesn't look like it really touches on, like, the historic Shake Rag area, but I would like to know, like, will this have any impact on, like, either Southern Queen or the old, uh, Straight, State Street Gym that's right there? That used to be the Capitol Loom building.
I don't know of any direct impacts, but I would imagine that as the property is redeveloped, that it will hopefully just invite more people to that part of downtown in hopes of restoring and rehabilitating some of those older buildings to where they can be preserved and enjoyed by our community for years to come. That's our hope. Um, I know that these developers don't own those properties specifically, uh, but hopefully it'll kind of, uh, reinvent, uh, what's visioned for that area of downtown and, and bring more people to that area and along the riverfront.
What about the housing? So, it will not tear those buildings down, just because I know I've gotten some concerns about it, and I've told them I don't believe it is gonna have any impact on it, and you kinda re, uh, stated something that I've told them, so I'm glad to hear that.
Sure. So, the block and a half that are part of this development, uh, currently, there are not any homes within the block that's proposed to be developed. So, if there were any other, uh, future developments that may impact any of that housing, that would still have to go, uh, through permit approval and, and possibly rezoning, depending on what the future uses may be for those parcels.
Thank you, Rachel.
Yes, sir.
A few follow-up questions. Is this, uh, so I'm looking at the conceptual design, oh, there's not a page number. Um, is it closing down College Street? Or is it just, they're gonna get special permission to make it fancier right there? Or what is, did, did we get, did they get approval to shut that down and make it private?
So, the street won't be closed.
Okay.
Uh, it's just that it kind of spans both sides, and so it's a whole block and then the half-block on the southeast side of College Street. I think depending on what their budget allows for, they've expressed desire to try and make some improvements, even as far as trying to bury some of the utilities. That's not set in stone, but they've expressed their desire to do that and kind of liven up the streetscape, maybe with some, uh, enhancements to the pedestrian amenities, wider sidewalks, street plannings, things like that.
Commissioner Beasley Brown, uh, uh, there will be a project on College Street under the Neighborhood Improvement Program that Brent and Nick are, are doing. So, College Street will eventually, uh, look similar to State Street, the way we've, we've put in some bike lanes, and, uh, it'll be, uh, really similar to what that, that end of State Street looks like, only coming back up toward downtown. That, that'll be our project, where we're, uh, working on the street and the streetscape and, and making it, uh, more bike-friendly, and I think we'll get, I think there's some new sidewalks planned, but may time those out with this development. So, but we can get more ma- more information to you later.
Um, my second question is, you know, this is our, this is gonna be the prime, uh, riverfront area, so this, I, it looks like maybe, you know, you said it's conceptual, so who knows? We'll, we'll end up being there, but in terms of sidewalk space for, if restaurants were to be on the bottom floor, is there enough space there for outdoor eating so we can make sure as many people can still enjoy the, the view as possible?
Yeah, there, there is room for that. Um, they also have plans for some rooftop spaces to where customers or patrons might be able to, you know, be higher up and view the river from above, so I think that's definitely part of their desire for this project.
Uh, when I went to Memphis with my family, it was heartbreaking to see how their, like, a big convention center took up all of their riverfront space, and so it seemed like such a waste, and there was no windows in that building. So, I just wanna make sure that we are, you know, this one shot that we've got, we are taking advantage of it. Um, the last question I had, uh, was in terms of community input. Um, this is in the historic Shake Rag District, and there's such a small footprint left of this, uh, really important neighborhood that we have, and, um, just checking to see if they had been a part, or had, had a voice in, in this, in this at all, if they will in the future, to, to ensure that, uh, the neighborhood's getting, uh, a part of, of what this will look like.
Not sure if the developer has reached out to any of the community members directly, but we certainly would have done our public notification, uh, leading up to the Planning Commission public hearing. There wasn't anyone in attendance at the meeting from the public who expressed any concern. I think we maybe had a phone call or two, just from adjacent property owners, um, but we didn't receive any specific concerns regarding the project.
And then, um, i- in terms of the, what we know about the conceptual layout, how much of it is public potentially, and how much of it will be only for people who own property as a part of this development? Do you know?
It's my understanding that, that the majority of it would be private. Um, I think they have some, there's two different concepts that they turned in. Um, there are some internal green space areas, but it's my understanding that many of those would be just for the use of the residents that are living in those homes. Um, the exterior green spaces and open spaces, uh, may be more available for public use, uh, but until we know exactly what their plans are as far as the uses and the building layout and the parking layout, it's hard to say exactly what may or may not be public.
Um, so, did they say at all in terms of, in terms of the public types of spaces, like, what's possible in terms of what they were hoping would be public space? Not public space, but I mean restaurants, uh, the distillery, things that the public can have an opportunity to enjoy the space, even if they don't own property there?
Sure. Yeah, there, um, in the two concepts they provided, there's a development summary column, and it kinda breaks down the different use and the spaces by square footage. Uh, quite a bit of that, seventy thousand square feet, um, in both of the conceptual plans are for retail, uh, they've got some restaurant space, bowling alley, distillery and brewery tasting, rooftop terrace, bar areas, so up to seventy thousand square feet, um, on both of the concepts they planned for, um, I guess, public space in that anyone in the community could come and enjoy those facilities.
Thank you so much. It sounds like an exciting project.
Hey, no more questions from Commissioners? All right. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG twenty twenty-three dash eleven, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing six point three eight acres from HE Agriculture and RM four multifamily residential to PUD Planned Unit Development, located at nineteen sixty-five Kentucky Highway one ninety-five, presently owned by Beach Holdings LLC.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Again, Mr. Mizel.
This is sort of part two of this development or this project, uh, by Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Coleman. Uh, they got a seven-oh, uh, vote from the commission, uh, Planning Commission, uh, same night, uh, to rezone fifteen and a half acres out on Old Richards, or, Old Richardsville Road and one eighty-five, uh, from Ag to multifamily residential and planned unit development, and, uh, all went unanimous. Uh, this is the receiving end if, of the, the boat rides, the canoes, the kayaks, if they leave from the other spot, they would end up here, uh, with, with a nice development with restaurants and all kinds of stuff here, as you can see in your packets. And again, Ms. Hurt is here to answer any questions on this rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions from our Commissioners?
It's amazing. I'm super excited about making our river usable for recreation and connecting these two spots. It's really exciting to, to see how, uh, we can really start making, uh, our waterways a place where we can continue to draw tourism, but also enjoy, um, the, just the beautiful scenery that we have right here in downtown Bowling Green. So, I'm really excited about this project and ways to just, just a couple of minutes out of town, be right there in the middle of nature. I love it. It looks amazing.
What I'm excited about is this private development. It's, it's not a public development, that our private citizens see the value in this riverfront and how that might be a return on their investment for the future of Bowling Green, so that's why I wanna say thank you to those folks. This is a great vision. Beautiful.
Something else, like looking at that amphitheater, you know, I had, one of the things when I first came into office, I talked to the city manager and some of the other Commissioners, it's like during the, the height of the, the COVID, you know, we couldn't go inside, but we could've went outside. Just imagine if we would've had an amphitheater during that time. Sometimes my wife and, uh, she's from Barstown, Kentucky, so they have that amphitheater that, that's down there, and they have, like, I forget what it's, the, the, uh, Foster play or something, and they have it every summer. And just imagine if we would've had something like that in the height of COVID. Even when everything was shut down, we could've had that still open to see some type of movies, 'cause we would've been outside, to see still certain type concerts, limited, but still being able to see it. But being able to have the fresh air and something, that's gonna be a real game changer in the future, you know, and there's a lot of people who's gonna fish here. So, this is something that's gonna change our riverfront, but it's basically gonna change long-term, that rate of investment that we're gonna have is gonna have a long-term im- impact, not just on downtown, but the entire city of Bowling Green. So, everything working together, and we're talking about the transpark. It's gonna be something that's gonna be great to see within the next twenty years.
Well, it was hard to see post-twenty-three, um, closed shop, but they have consolidated with the VFW, and I think they're more powerful together than they were separated, so, um, I saw some positives in that, but, uh, to see this land being, um, being utilized in a special way, I think is gonna be very, very special, and it's gonna add addition to the river and, and addition to our vision, because it, um, extrapolates the river to being utilized and have a, an outtake where we have an intake, and so I think that's, um, very special, and where we've added, you know, green space, and we continue to add green space and continue to enhance our parks, so I'm, I'm excited about this project overall.
Okay. No more questions or comments from our Commissioners. Rachel, again, thank you for being here. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty twenty-three dash one oh four.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application through the Kentucky Fire Commission Training Facility Grant Program in an amount up to three hundred thirty-six thousand, three hundred ninety-one dollars for the purchase of a live fire training unit for the fire department.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel. Uh, the Bowling Green Fire Department-
The Bowling Green Fire Department is in need of replacing our burn, what we call our burn building, where we do training up at North Side Fire Station. It's basically a kind of a two-story structure that can be host live fires for training. And it's been there for quite some time. But Fire Department reached out to Mr. Nick Cook and found this grant with the Kentucky Fire Commission Training Facility Program, and we would like to apply for these funds for 336, 391. There is no match required, so this would be an excellent grant to use on this project that we would hope we would get. And this would go to good use for our recruit classes, our shift personnel that do ongoing continuing education, training on fighting fires. So really, really good opportunity here. And Nick Cook, I believe, is here to answer any questions. Can't see him, but I can feel him. So I feel his presence. So he can answer any questions. And I'll let it go there.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions? Great job again, Nick. I know you're applying for it, but you find things that you know you can get, and that's what's amazing. I think you've delivered 99.9% of that time. So thank you again for your work. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2023-105.
Municipal order authorizing the Housing Authority of Bowling Green to retain a city's portion of the payment in lieu of taxes for the 2022 tax year in a total amount of $27,475.25.
Still moved.
Second. Move back Commissioner Perigin, second back Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
So as you know, the Housing Authority of Bowling Green is not on the tax rolls. They do not pay property taxes. But decades ago, we were fortunate enough for them to sign a payment in lieu of tax agreement. And for decades, though, also, we have allowed them to keep that pilot payment to go toward after-school programming. And so before you tonight is a request for this upcoming year for them to retain their pilot payment to the city in the amount of $27,475.25. Mr. Abraham Williams is here with us and Ms. Katie, and can answer any questions you might have about their after-school program. But this has been a huge success for, as long as I can remember, as long as I've been with the city. So we've been doing this. So the calculations are kind of in your packet that are submitted from the Housing Authority. Katie looks them over, makes sure they look, look good and everything, everything looks correct. And we are proposing to allow them to keep their $27,475 payment for their after-school programming.
Katie, thank you for being here. Mr. Williams, we'd love to have you come up the podium, just give us a little update.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to make him do that. At least he can come up here and say hello.
Thank you so much. This program started back in 1996. First Learning Center, we had 13 kids. And to hire director, the city allowed us to keep $6,500. And from then now, we have, this summer, we're serving 120 kids. Thank you so much for the city for helping our kids. Those kids who have been watching television or doing anything this summer, they're at the Learning Center during the school year, wouldn't need access to computers and all that. We're helpful to get them. Thank you again for the city, and thank you all for believing in the Housing Authority of Bowling Green.
Thank you, Abraham.
Mr. Williams, I appreciate everything that the Housing Authority has. You know, I grew up around that area. And we know, like, sometimes when children, especially during the summertime, that's when a lot of learning that those children had is lost. And we know that today is a lot different from when we grew up. So that assistance in getting these children, it's helping out, like, not just them, but their families, and making sure that they have a chance, a chance to go to college. And even if it's not college, but they pursue something, they've become better than where they started out. And that's a great thing to help out kids, to give them that foothold or that foundation to be better than where they started at, especially from a kid who knows.
This summer, I'm very proud. We've had 12 kids who, as kids, they came to the Learning Center. Now they're college students, and they're back as two to the college at our Learning Center. So going around. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Abraham. All right, roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2023-106.
Municipal order authorizing the continuation of a contract for Clear Lane Enhanced DI-SER with Cargill, Inc. of North Olmsted, Ohio, in the amount of $139.52 per ton.
Second.
Back Commissioner Hill, second back Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
We awarded a bid for DI-SER back in 2022, Municipal Order 2022-125. It was a one-year deal that expires this month. We have reached out to Clear Lane or Cargill, Inc. for this Clear Lane DI-SER product, and they are willing to keep the price the same for another year. And we'd like to take advantage of that. It's always good to buy DI-SER in the summertime and not in the wintertime when it's freezing over. I have Mr. Andy Sousa, our new Public Works Director, here to answer any questions you might have on this one.
Mr. Mizel, questions? Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2023-107.
Municipal order authorizing a change order to the contract with Branstadter Carroll, Inc. of Lexington, Kentucky for architectural and engineering services for Fire Station Number Five and Training Center in the amount of $180,000 for a total project cost of $720,000.
Still moved.
Move back Commissioner Perigin, second back Commissioner Carlos Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
I know. Here we are with another change order. I will take full responsibility for this one. This is my story, and I have witnesses in the room that can back me up. So what's going on here is that we went out for proposals. We got two proposals at the beginning, one from Branstadter Carroll, which is who we selected, and another firm. They were to draw a sketch or plans for our two fire stations, Number Five, Number Eight, along with Training Center. Bids came in high, over budget, came in at $720,000. We had based that on a $12 million project, which we had no clue about what costs were going to be. That was estimating it at $300 and some dollars a square foot. So not really that realistic, as we found out later. So we negotiated them down to a $540,000 contract, not to exceed $540,000, not base it on a percentage of construction either. And we both agreed to that. We got into the planning stages, met the January right after the tornadoes. I walked into the meeting among a lot of firemen and Hayner and a lot of other police chief. And I looked at the plans, and the tornado was heavily on my mind. And I thought, we've got to make this place fortified. Can we make this our backup EOC? Can we make it our backup dispatch center? And so that was after we'd already shook hands and signed the deal. And so we threw that at them. They said, yes, we think we can do that. Got into that. We also got into the fact that Station Five, if we tore down Station Five, where would our firemen operate out of when we're looking at temporary housing there? And so we had them start drawing some plans for a temporary housing building that was in the back of that lot behind the existing fire station that we use for storage, is basically a storage barn that we were going to convert, maybe add on some bedrooms to. So we had them looking at that. And then we decided, no, let's not do that. Let's keep Fire Station Five intact. Let's build around it and tear it down after we get it built. So we had them draw plans for that. And then we decided, no, it's not facing right. It's not going, so we had them turn it 90 degrees to avoid getting into the basin, the drainage basin on the lot that we had bought. So a lot of changes occurred. They came back to us and said, you know, we really, really were out money based on everything. We were way outside of the scope of this project. And so Katie, Andy, Dave Hayner, and I sat down with the architect and negotiated a price of, they first came out with an additional $300 and some thousand dollars, and we negotiated down to an additional $180,000 for all their extra work, which brought us back to the original bid of $720,000. When you look at that as a percentage, if you did look at it at a percentage of what we're going to build, about $20 million of construction, that's really below 4%. So we're 4.5% of what we originally were looking at. So I'll take full responsibility for this additional $180,000, but it was definitely earned by Branstadter Carroll. They did everything we asked them to do multiple times. We made them jump through a lot of hoops and change a lot of things. And in the end, we think we're going to get a really good product, and we've got it ready for construction. And here we are today, ready to go. So this is to pay, pay the Branstadter Carroll a little bit more money for their extra work.
Thank you.
Sorry for the long explanation.
Commissioners?
I'd like to thank you, City Manager Mizel. As I stated last meeting, I hated surprises because of that change order. I just want to be on the record that I think this is definitely warranted, and I appreciate you going on and changing it then versus us having it built and thinking, why didn't we change it? And you did what was best for this city and our community. So thank you so much. And it is tornado safe, correct?
That's correct.
So thank you very much.
215 mile an hour winds, I believe. One thing I forgot is, Danita will also play a big part in this. We'll have the backup dispatch center relocated eventually from Greenwood Fire Station to the new Training Center. And so that will free up space for IT to have a redundant center, more room at Greenwood for redundancy of our IT operations out there. So it helps IT out at the same time.
Thank you. Committe- All right, no further questions. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2023-108.
Municipal order authorizing the continuation of a contract for concrete with Garrett Brothers Continuous Mix, Inc. of Bowling Green, Kentucky, based on unit prices.
Still moved. Second.
I move back Commissioner Perigin, second back Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
This is another item we bid out in '22 with a one-year contract with options to renew another additional year. Mr. Meyer out of Garrett Brothers Continuous Mix has agreed to keep his prices the same for FY24. Not only does Public Works use this, but multiple departments use this contract. And we think estimated annual cost could be up to $106,000 based on the different types of concrete that we need. So Andy, again, is here to answer any questions you might have on this renewal for concrete. And I think Mr. Brent Belcher uses this with Parks Maintenance as well on occasion.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions? None. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2023-109.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the number 2023-22 for College Street Pedestrian Bridge Rehabilitation from Intech Contracting LLC of Lexington, Kentucky, in the amount of $2,281,261.
Still moved. Second.
Move back Commissioner Beasley Brown, second back Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
So as you remember, we got a $1.6 million tap grant to renovate the College Street, rehab the College Street pedestrian bridge. We matched that with $400,000 of the city's money. Went out for a bid. We got one bid from Intech Contracting LLC, which came in a little high, a little higher, at 2.281. And so we are roughly $281,000 over our budget. But a good thing is, there is a potential, once they get into the project, that we may not need $160,000 of that, depending on what they determine we need for the jack and the support bridge bearings, once they get into the project. This will cover all cap repairs, base encasements, any pier repairs, scour mitigation, bracing upwards on the, on the bridge and the decking repairs. We'll sandblast it and remove the lead paint off of the bridge, improve lighting at both ends of the bridge, and it's going to be a really good project. But the lead paint will be removed, and the entire bridge will be repainted at this, at this cost. Nick is here, can answer any questions you might have on the grant piece. Katie's worked on this as well as finding the additional funds that we need. And Melissa can answer any technical questions you have on the project of rehabbing this bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel.
Andy's here as well, can answer questions on the project.
Commissioners?
How many layers of paint are there on that bridge? There's got to be a lot.
We thought, we thought the lead had been removed, but I was confusing it with a railroad bridge from years ago. They removed it and didn't repaint it. That's why it looks like it's rusty.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2023-12, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance adopting annual city budget. Ordinance adopting the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, by estimating revenues and appropriating funds for the operation of city government.
Still moved. Second.
Back Commissioner Perigin, second back Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
So here we are, first reading, general fund budget proposed is $96,132. All funds budget proposed is $156,862,749. We are going, we would be using some fund balance in the other funds that are not general fund, that we have saved up for various projects, capital funds, projects. Hopefully, you all got a chance to watch our budget video that we produced several weeks ago and delivered to you a couple weeks ago, along with the budget packet and the budget memo. Again, we have done our best to be frugal, yet provide adequate resources to departments to enable to serve our citizens in the expected way that we've done for many years. We did not include any revenues from the tax rate increase in this budget. We'll address those later. But we'll only get about five months of the 12 months of those from the withholding tax, starting next February, when it's implemented, January 1. And then the net profit tax, we won't see them until spring of 2025, the increase. So Katie's here, can answer any questions you might have come up with since we sent this out. And, but we feel like this is a a good, solid budget for FY24 that will meet all of the obligations we have existing, take on some capital projects for the community, and give back to the citizens for a good return on their investments.
Hey, well, y'all have done a great job of giving us information in advance. We raved last year the video that explained it and gave it to us personally. I'm in favor of that, so thank you very much. And I'll turn it over to the commissioners for statements or comments or questions at this time. And, um, I'll turn it over to the commissioners for statements or comments or questions at this time.
I thought it was excellent. Thank you for the video. Um, I told Katie earlier, I think Jeff needs an agent. He did so well. It's just very good, very, very good.
There's a thing called a teleprompter that comes in really handy.
Cheater. Well, it was excellent. And most of everything in the budget are things that we have already discussed and agreed upon. So I didn't see any surprises, I didn't see anything that, you know, wasn't expected. And it looks like a solid budget that puts us on, on some good, good, solid ground for the future. So thank you.
I want to echo that. Thanks to the whole finance team. I know that's a huge lift to make, uh, so many different pieces and, uh, such complicated math, uh, be understandable and readable, uh, for us novices. And I'm just so grateful for you all, helping us really, uh, reach those goals of wanting to be transparent and, um, making sure that we are, you know, using our funds efficiently and we are being held accountable, uh, in a way that is not, uh, makes it clear to the public. This is how we are using public dollars to make sure that we are improving quality of life and, uh, making sure that our city is safe and, um, that you can, you know, this continues to be a place where you know that we're investing in the community in a way that's a great place to retire, raise kids, and, and just have a, a, a wonderful, uh, life here. So just thank you all so much for, uh, making these numbers, not only, uh, just in the PowerPoint presentation, but, um, you know, equipping me as a commissioner and that, you know, that huge responsibility we have to make sure that we are, uh, doing what the, the citizens have elected us to do. Every page in these binders where you make, uh, the numbers come alive with pictures and narratives and talking about where exactly the, each, uh, piece of the, the capital project's going to come from. And, and you're able to break that down in a way that I have a full understanding of where all of our dollars are going. And I feel equipped, um, by, uh, I see, that I know that this binder did not come, uh, without a lot, many, 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 many hours. And I just want you all to know how much it means to me, um, that you all have equipped us so well to, to do, um, this job and to know that we are, um, you know, spending these dollars in a way that's gonna make a big impact. And I'm really excited about our riverfront, uh, you know, just approving this private fund dollars, but knowing that we're, uh, you know, have the grants from the federal, uh, funds, but also local dollars to, to really start making the whole, uh, riverfront development, uh, come alive. And so just my one question would be, what, uh, what visual or visible progress will be made in this fiscal year regarding riverfront? Or is it all be kind of conceptual at this point to bring to the public some designs? And that's what we will come out of for this budget?
So, um, part of the project with our design company that we've hired, MKS, is to do a public participation process. And I believe that's gonna be kicked off this week with Duncan Hind Days. Um, and so that is gonna happen before some of the conceptuals because they want to get some ideas from the community as to what they're looking for. And I don't know how long that process may take. It could take three, four months. Um, but then they'll start to bring in some, some actual conceptual designs. They'll go back, I believe, to public participation meetings to show those designs and get some feedback of what they like, what they don't like. And obviously, this information would also be presented to the board as we get a little closer to, um, to narrowing it down. Um, but that would essentially be the process during this next fiscal year. And then once a design is ultimately selected, they would start, uh, and they're gonna work on the whole master plan, I should say. So the entire park, the master plan for the park, uh, would be developed in this process. Um, and again, that may take four, six months. It just depends on how quickly that particular piece can go along. Um, but also, they will design Phase One so we can use that, that grant that we received, the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant. That is very specific in some of the components that it needs so that Phase One would ultimately be some of that very preliminary things that we have to do, uh, in order to satisfy the grant. But then we are pre-funding in this budget for Phase Two so that we can almost immediately start construction documents for it as well. So we hope to have at least in the next five years, if not sooner, through Phase Two, uh, of this project. So we hope after this week, the kickoff, um, it will really start to move along. And, um, this particular company, uh, they have several, um, subs that they're using to help with the component of the public interaction. And so we were really excited and pleased. Um, Nick, uh, is gone, okay. Uh, Nick was very much a part of this process as well. And, uh, so I feel like we're, we're gonna really get a good product out of this and there will be a lot of public participation. So it may take a little bit longer just because of that. Uh, it won't just be us deciding what goes there and what doesn't, so.
Some, some of you all might, you all might remember what we did when we did, uh, the downtown rehabilitation with around Fountain Square all the way down to, um, Eighth, I think it is. Uh, we had multiple public forums down at BGMU. Uh, Dana, I think you were in on those and Sue may have been here. Uh, but multiple meetings where the public could come in and put posted notes down on what they liked, what they didn't like. And they had nice maps and...
Who could, who could re- forget reverse parking?
Yeah, and the reverse parking, uh, that was proposed, got canned. And so that, that's the good thing about the public.
Backup forums.
I get it.
So, uh, you find out, you found out, you definitely find out what people don't want. So, uh, a lot of times, it'll be, I think it'll be similar to those, uh, the way, uh, this, this group will conduct, uh, the meetings for the riverfront park.
They're gonna be taking advantage of some already public, um, activities. So like the Duncan Hind Days this week, they're gonna take full advantage of people out there and about in big crowds to really start to get that going. Uh, they will more than likely also have one or two sessions at the location so people can really visualize a little bit better. Um, so there's gonna be a lot of interaction in a lot of different ways for, for the public to participate.
Are we advertising? Public will know.
Uh, when, when we get a schedule going, I believe we'll be using social media quite a bit. Um, probably also on our website, Facebook, Twitter, um, and then through some of the other programs. Obviously, we may also reach out to some very specific stakeholders, uh, and, and invite them to participate. Um, I'm not sure if all of those specific details have been worked out just yet. Uh, but this was gonna be kind of that initial kickoff because we knew there'd be quite a few people downtown, uh, this, this, with Duncan Hind Days on Thursday and Friday and Saturday. So I think that's what they were gonna try and kick it off during that process.
As part of their contract, they're responsible for the publicity and marketing of, of the public meetings and coordinating those. So it's all part of their, their, their contract.
And I believe similar to what we did with the downtown design is that there'll be a website very specific to the riverfront that we will direct people to with updates, regular updates on that as well.
Um, my one other thing, I want to just take advantage of this moment where I have Erin and, uh, Chief Delaney here just checking to see, like, you know, out course with all the things we're doing to help recruit new police officers and, um, with the raises and the new starting pay. Just wanted to possibly get an update on how close we are to being up to complement and, um, what we maybe hope in the next year in terms of continuing to hire more police officers.
Uh, good afternoon. I think you mentioned a lot of things that we're doing. I, I continue to be very grateful for your support for our new pay schedule. Um, I think that is going to, um, be very effective in the coming months. We are starting a, um, a fresh push, uh, for recruitment for Class Six that will start later. We already have our first hire, so that lets you know how it's going, which is, it's going pretty well. Um, we're starting our second year of year-round recruitment. Um, that's getting a little bit getting used to, but we are seeing applicants that are regularly applying, attending LESI, attending POPS testing. Um, we have some upcoming resignations and retirements, um, that, that are, we're pretty much anticipating. Um, I'm going to be presenting in a little bit our BGPDR program. So you're gonna see a little bit about that, uh, Exhibit B that we're adding to our policy manual. I'll tell you a little bit about, um, uh, we're, we're hoping about five will, will add to, to complement from there. So, um, we're feeling pretty comfortable. Is that fair? Okay. Um, between the seven we just hired, um, the two we hired tonight, um, the up to five retirees that we'll be able to hire sometime this summer after we put that program into effect, and then Class Six, um, I, I think that we're, we're feeling comfortable with being able to continue to attract and, um, and retain, I think, more than, than we anticipated as well.
In terms of, um, you know, the, the strain on our police officers over time, uh, you know, mushing the rest between that hard work that they do mentally, physically, uh, are we getting to a place where we feel like we've got the staff that gives that, that break for, uh, our police officers? Are we still kind of on the, you know, sh- shorthand and a lot of overtime at this point?
I, I will have to refer to, to Katie or, or Chief as far as overtime. I, I'm not aware that we're specifically over budget on overtime. Um, and, uh, Chief would be able to answer better on specific operations of being stretched. Um, you know, we, we have presented staffing plans and the chief has been very conservative in what he asks for based on, um, multiple different recommendations on how many officers we should have for a community of our size. Um, he, his requests for new staff are, um, they're, what we are actually able to hire. He's, he's not asking for thirty more officers. We know that we, we can't hire thirty more officers right now, even though, um, those, those different organizations might suggest that that's what's needed. So, um, I, I wouldn't say always stretch. I would probably have to refer to Chief on the specifics of, of the operation of, um, of, of his officers right now. But we have been able to steadily hire throughout the years. If you look each year, we're, we're hiring four, five, we're getting grants, um, and, and we're continuing. But we always seem a little bit behind, but, um, if you look at the trend, we are a little bit, we're, we're always a little bit up than we were in the prior year. So, um, I think we're making headway. Anything you want to add?
Thank you.
I say something. Back to the budget part of it. I know all this is related to the budget, but is the, uh, budget presentation on our website, website right now at BGKY.org?
It is. It's on our Facebook, or, I'm sorry, on our YouTube page. And when I looked yesterday, it was the very first one. Um, it might get pushed back after tonight's meeting being put on there, but it is right there. Uh, it's less than an hour. It's fifty-two minutes and some, some seconds. Um, so we did try to keep it concise and consolidated. I would like to point out, there is one typo that I just found out about. Uh, there was a miskey under the agency funding. It is correct. In your budget document, the presentation is off by three thousand dollars. It's not a big thing. Um, but that, that is, um, out there for anyone to access, uh, and view at this point. Um, and then, of course, as soon as the budget is adopted, uh, before the end of August, we will have that final document out there and on our website as well. Uh, so what you have in your green binder will be out there for the public to review anytime they'd like to. Uh, but we do wait until it's finalized and again, to catch any other potential, um, corrections that need to be made as we put this together in somewhat of a, of a rush just to make sure we got everything ready for, for tonight. And this is the recommended versus the final. So if, if there are potential changes, then we can incorporate that as well before we put the final one out there.
Citizens could go to our website and watch that presentation if they feel it.
Absolutely. We put it out there as of the Friday before Memorial Day. And I believe it also went out on our social media, um, the...
It's probably on Channel Four as well, if you have cable.
Yes, probably. Yeah. I would like to also express my appreciation to all of the staff in the finance department that participated in this. Uh, particularly Sean Weeks is here. Erin Blue couldn't make it tonight. Uh, but they are key, uh, personnel that I have in my department. They participate on the budget team. Erin Halsey also on the budget team. Like to thank everyone, uh, in all the departments that participated, um, putting together the recommendations for each of them. And, and I very much appreciate, um, all of the, the participation by my staff. And, and we utilized a different company this year to do the video. Uh, so we weren't able to do that in-house, but I think it, it turned out really well.
Like building a house, uh, we start at the foundation with our departments. Remember that picture I sent you all in January? We're all in this room. It, that's, that's the, the departmental re- representatives that put together the department's budgets. It gets passed up. We meet with each department head, uh, around March and April. Uh, we, Katie works them over pretty good with, uh, with, with cuts. And, uh, we, we finally get there over time. It's, it's a long process, but it's, I think it's, it's, it's healthy. Uh, everybody gets, gets to participate in it, uh, from, from the department level. And they give us some really good ideas and, and it works. It's, it's been working well. And, uh, hope, hopefully we can continue with it.
Okay, commissioners, floor's still open. Okay. Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Ordinance Number BG Twenty Twenty Three Dash Thirteen, First Reading, Non-Binding.
Ordinance Relating to Classification Pay Schedules. Ordinance Admitting to Classification Pay Schedules G for General Classified, D for Department Head Management, and U for Unclassified Part-Time Employees and Authorizing Pay Increases for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty Four.
Still moved.
Goodbye Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
As I reiterated in our budget message, uh, we are a service organization and, uh, we don't have, uh, robots and fancy machinery and equipment. We have people that provide services to this community of seventy-five thousand people over forty-two square miles. And so with that, it's a big piece of our budget. And so this next item is pertaining to personnel. It's our ordinance that we do every year, along with budget, uh, to update our pay classification scales. And I'd like for Erin Halsey, our HR Director, to, to step up and give you an overview of this, this, uh, this item. Erin?
Thanks. Yes. A, a big part of our budget, but, um, it's, it's pretty clear this year. Nothing, nothing overly complex. We're following the, the COLA CPI that was recommended for, um, the, the department head schedule as well as the general schedule, which all full-time, non-sworn employees fall under. And we just have a couple, um, of adjustments on these schedules. Uh, you can see the changes and upgrades. The communications supervisors are going up a grade. And then those other three are all fleet. That's, that's a general reorg. We are, um, we, we think we're really behind the, the private market with our automotive technicians and we're starting to feel that, um, as we have so many new vehicles. Um, and, and we need to continue to be able to have a really strong fleet staff. So all three of those, um, are related to that. On, on the schedule U, which is all of our part-time, the majority of this is our Parks Department and, and they, we can't do summer without them. Um, and so we, last year, if you recall, we made adjustments to the schedule to go up to twelve dollars minimum. So we, we bumped that up another dollar again. Uh, so now we're starting at a minimum of thirteen dollars. Now we're on that part-time schedule. And that, uh, that was adjusted grades one through forty. Starting at fifty, we went by the COLA. For some reason, when this was, schedule was created, there was just a really big gap between forty and fifty. And so this is just kind of making that gap a little bit smaller. Um, grade eighty is our umpires and referees and, uh, it continues. It, it's starting to be more of a struggle to hire those individuals. A lot of the clubs, uh, are able, like, travel teams and whatnot. They are able to hire referees and umpires at a much higher hourly rate or a per-game rate because they charge for people to come to their events. And they, they have a, a much higher revenue stream than we do. We, we offer our programs mostly as an amenity. Um, we don't, we don't make money off of our programs. But in order to have quality programs where everyone feels safe, is learning, is having a good time, we really need to have strong umpires that know, um, that are, that are capable to run those programs. So that's the reason why we're going from twenty-one to twenty-five dollars an hour to, to attract those, um, those umpires for those programs. Um, couple new titles, um, that were explained only, only to full-time facilities technician and community navigator, but some other adjustments at the pool. For years, we've had some swim instructors. This isn't a new program. We've always done swim lessons, but we've, for some reason, we've just always called them lifeguards. And they're not. There's a certification. They're on different, they should have different job descriptions, different certifications, that kind of thing. So, um, we are, we are creating, um, some different positions for swim instructor one and swim instructor two, based on what they do. The swim instructor two is really the person who trains our lifeguards. There's only one person there. And then lifeguard one and two was, um, Adam Butler, who, um, did... And then lifeguard one and two was Adam Butler, who did just retire from the city after 28 years. We haven't really mentioned that, but dedicated so much of his life and his time to the parks programs, but he made this recommendation as a way to find more lifeguards. And so lifeguard one are shallow water, and we have a huge shallow water area at that water park, and then lifeguard two is our the deep water, and hopefully throughout the summer, they're able to promote up as they're able to get that further certification. So do you have any questions?
Thank you, Aaron.
Great. Just want to thank you all so much for helping to put forward the vision all of us had of that commitment to that full COLA. I know a lot of public agencies were not able to do that for their employees, and I know the five of us in January unanimously said we wanted to make sure our employees got that full COLA of 6.5, and you all deserve it, and we're just so grateful for the way that you serve our community, and we're getting emails and letters all the time about the positive impact you have on our community and how much they notice the little things that you all do to take care of our community in such a powerful way. So thank you all for what you do.
Thank you very much. Questions? Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-110.
Municipal Order Authorizing and Approving Coverage by Companion Life for Employee Health Care Specific Stop Loss Insurance Coverage for Fiscal Year 2024.
Second.
Goodbye Commissioner Hill, second bye Commissioner Perigin, Mr. Muzel.
So as you all know, we are self-insured on our health insurance plan, and we have to buy insurance for our insurance in case we have a large claim. So we have insurance for any claims that go above $250,000, and we bid that out, and I got several proposals back, and we have an opportunity before us with this one to save $95,000 compared to last year on this plan. So this is Companion Life that we are proposing to go with. This would, as I mentioned, save us $95,000. They did not include any lasers, which means they're not isolating or rejecting any claimants out there that's existing now. Those would be covered, and Aaron Halsey is here, worked on this, can answer any questions you might have on this proposal and this contract with Companion Life for what we call stop loss insurance that caps our exposure on our own self-funded plan.
Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-111.
Municipal Order Approving Amendments to the Administrative Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual for the Addition of Appendix B Related to the Bowling Green Police Department Retired Officer Program.
All moved.
Second. Goodbye Commissioner Daniel Beasley Brown, second bye Commissioner Melinda Hill, Mr. Muzel.
This is a program I'm really excited about, and Aaron and Chief Delaney have worked hard on this along with Deputy Chief Bowles and Deputy Chief Harrell, I'm sure, for the retired BG PDR Retire Officer Program. And I'd like Aaron to come up and just kind of give you a brief synopsis of what this is going to look like. We've got, looks like we've got a policy manual, sort of, the kind of rules of the game for this prepared for you, Appendix B. So Aaron, you want to take over?
So the reality is, all the heavy lifting was done by Lori Gray, and she did all the research, she filed all the applications, she wrote this policy, so a huge thank you to her for the work that she did on that. She's the new HR manager supporting the police department, so very grateful for her work on this. The retirement, there's some different statutes that allow us to do this, and kind of to shorten some of the terms in here, of course, we have to, the beginning part of this policy is just the legal stuff that qualifies someone. From our standpoint, we want to make sure that they've retired from Bowling Green Police Department, so this just, this isn't anyone. This is someone who knows our city, knows our department, knows our rules, knows our culture, and of course, our command staff would know them and be familiar with them and decide if they're good to come back. They would be coming back on contracts for no more than one year. It's still at will. If something happens during that time, of course, it can be canceled, and it can be renewed by mutual agreement by both the police officer and the police chief. When we put forth our classification pay schedule earlier this year that you looked at, there's a new classification at the very top, so most of them go P1, P2, P3, all the way through five. This one's at the very top, and it's specifically for the retiree program. So each year, we will relook at what the pay should be for someone in that retiree program and increase that. This includes what benefits they will get, the compensation, how they will get overtime, what shifts and assignments they will work, what they'll be required to do while they are here. So at this time, technically through the retirement system, based on our complement, we are able to hire, I think, 25 or 30? It's pretty high. We're looking at keeping that around five. We can adjust that if we need to, but there's certain things that we want them to do, and there's going to be a lot of great benefits by bringing back some of that knowledge and expertise to our department, so we're really excited. So let me know if you have any questions.
Well, first of all, I know we talked about this in January, in the military, if you have vacancies for multiple positions, you can hire over retirees. So we discussed that because we have a budget that states you're spending this on your full complement, and we know we're not. And so I'm excited that we were able to finally get here, and I know 1 July was our date, so I think we're in that process now or somewhere. So one of my major concerns is our commission, is that we ensure that you have the resources you need to be able to protect our community. So I am fully in favor of this. The one thing I will add is, because it's prohibitionary, you know, you have those measures, you know, I understand hiring only from Bowling Green Police, but we're hiring from outside, external. It's just something that, I know you've written it in the policy, but I would say that there are people that may be the right person at the right time, and maybe they're moving to Bowling Green, and maybe they have law enforcement in their blood, and I just hate to see that we would turn that person away if they're ready and they're able to serve. But that's not saying our Bowling Green Police are not the premier, and we love them the most because we do, but we're depending, just like we hired tonight from external, and I just hate to see that we're losing that ability because we always have the ability to hire, and we have the ability to ensure that this person fits and does their job complimentary to what we were asking them, so.
I think, Mayor, probably the main reason behind that is the training piece. All of these, everyone that we would bring back that's retired police, BGPD, have undergone our field training certifications, and someone from the outside coming in, we would still have to run them through field training, I believe, and Chief can step up and fill in the gaps. But I think the most expedient way to get these guys on the street would be to hire the retired BGPD guys because of their training they've already undergone and done, whereas like Mr. Teague tonight, he'll still have to go through, is it 12 weeks, Mike, or 14? 16 weeks of field training before we can turn him out by himself on the street. That's just our policy and our method we found is the most effective, so that was kind of the main reason behind writing that rule in here, but just for expediency.
It just limits our pool, you know.
I know it limits our field, our pool, so.
I would just like to clarify, we're not stopping hiring certified police officers. So this is a very specific designation to rehire retired BGPD police officers. It means they have to have done 20 years with the Bowling Green Police Department and retired from us, and there's some stipulations for how long they can be gone, and their certification needs to still be active for them to come back in the retirement program. And in the retirement program, they're going to have a special salary, special set of benefits. They do not pay into retirement, nor do they get retirement benefits. So it's a very specific designation of the type of employee with the retirement system. Now, if someone is, say, retired from another agency in Kentucky and their certification is still good, they have to have retired less than 60 months or be active somewhere, we could hire them as a certified officer. So they would come to us, and they would start in the P1 in that designation. They would be eligible for full retirement, full benefits, everything as a normal police officer. So we're actually able, this increases our pool that we'll be able to select from. I don't see it as a decrease.
Other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-112.
Municipal Order Approving the City of Bowling Green Peer Support Team Program Policy for the Police and Fire Departments.
All moved. Second.
Goodbye Commissioner Perigin, second bye Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Muzel.
So this one is another great program that was started a year or so ago, our peer support training. We've got 30 participants in this program already, and Aaron went to the General Assembly back in 2022 and fought for, you know, some protective actions with confidentiality, that sort of thing. And so I'm going to let Aaron come up and introduce this policy that we've, that she's developed for the Peer Support Team Program Policy that kind of gives them some boundaries and parameters for operating this program. Aaron?
This is the last time I have to come up, and you guys have to see me, so it's my last one, but by far the most important, and I would say that this journey started quite a while ago. This was first mentioned to me when I first started with the city almost five years ago, that we have police and fire that are interested. Our police and fire departments were asking for this program. They knew that they needed more tools and resources to help them be more resilient, to help them have better lives, both as first responders and in their family. And so when we first started talking about training, I talked to lots of people and got some advice that before we really got much further with this program, we really needed to have more protections at the state level, and so that's what we spent our time in in 2022, and we had the help of KLC, and we had one of our state senators, Mike Wilson, was able to sponsor this for us and to get the protections that we needed to make these conversations between peer supporters confidential for all first responders. We did already have protections for firefighters, but only firefighters, so we needed to cover dispatchers, we needed to cover police officers. It extended to EMS as well. And so we, we've had times before we had a peer support team in place where we've needed a peer support team, where we've needed a plan, where we've needed a resource, and we were scrambling and we didn't have something. And we, especially when the tornado came, it couldn't have been more obvious that we didn't have a plan. And through the grace of God, we met some people through Tennessee who came, and they debriefed our entire first responders, and then they have partnered with us to train our team, and so all 30 of our members have been through the Tennessee Public Safety Network Critical Stress Debriefing Training. There have been many other classes that some of our coordinators and other members have been to. They're soaking this up, trying to learn as much as they can. We started our quarterly training last fall with partnership of four local clinicians who are, we kind of have a handshake agreement for right now, and that's working, but they have all gone through cultural competency training for first responders. They've all done ride-alongs with our police and fire, and they're very active in our training and the lives of our first responders right now. They're calling them, they're using them, we know that. And I have to tell you, this program is working. Our people are using it to date. We do have them fill out a sheet just to let us know when they are having a peer support session, and since we started this in the fall, we've had 189 hours of peer support through debriefing or conversations, confidential conversations between our first responders and our peer support team. And I'm sure that there are many other hours that are not logged that are happening on breaks or around a kitchen table, in the break room, that kind of thing. So we started creating a manual. This was first started by Captain Kevin Lashley from the Fire Department. He did a lot of the foundation work for this policy manual, and then we had help also from our coordinators in the Police Department, Eric Woodward and Clifton Phelps. I added some things in here. We looked at other policies from other agencies that have been so helpful in sending us information. The most wonderful, Ashley Jackson proofreaded it. It looked like a whole different document when she was done with it, which is what you're seeing tonight. And the reason that we wanted to make sure that this was approved by you to put in place is that there are some things in here that we want to make enforceable, such as the selection, such as the training, the confidentiality rules. There's consequences to breaking the confidentiality as well as removal from the peer support team, and so we wanted to make sure that you supported this policy so that we can enforce those things if we needed to. You'll also see in the budget that every year, we increase the budget a little bit for this program, but it's so beneficial. Our people are using it, they're relying on it. I can tell you recently, the program's working. We've had instances, and we have a plan, and we're following the steps, and it's happening just like it's supposed to happen with our peer support team members, with our clinical support, with our facilities that we've partnered with, and I'm so grateful that we've done the work to get this so that we're providing, hopefully, a better life for our first responders who are serving our community. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Aaron. This is an important policy, and glad it's being utilized. The one question I have is, we may have some other employees that assisted, and if they wanted to opt-in, can they, if they're not in the police and fire, is that out for them or is this only for police?
We have referred employees to our peer supporters and our clinicians.
So we can?
We, yes, it's not in the, you know, traditional scope, but we have, if, I can tell you that I have referred people and have said, maybe you should call, they might be able to help with this, and there have been occasions where I've even known that we have a clinician that kind of specializes or can help, and I can say, you can always use our EAP, but we also have this person that you can call. And so we have gone outside those lines, and that was why it was really important even for both our police chief and our fire chief. They wanted one program. They wanted to be one team. We do our training together. I'm sending all of our coordinators to a really great training in Colorado this September. Those funds are in the budget, and that's going to be, they have, they've totally figured it out in Colorado. They've got a fantastic program, so I'm so excited to send our coordinators out there to be trained by them. And in addition to supporting people outside, our first responders within our own department, we have used our peer support program to help members in our community. So we have done debriefings for EMS, we have done debriefings for county fire. We're serving the community as well, and I would like everyone to know that the people who serve on the peer support team, they're volunteers. They're not being paid when they do this. This is completely on their own time. The training is paid, and if they're on the clock and they're doing something, it's paid, but when they're doing a debriefing on a Sunday for EMS, you know, they're doing that voluntarily, and I believe our clinicians are doing that voluntarily. So part of our expanded training is seeing if we can invite some of those departments in and be part of the training so they can expand this to their organizations as well.
Thank you, Aaron.
Questions? Further questions? Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-113.
Municipal Order Authorizing and Approving Amendments to Version 12 of the 2023 Edition of the Bowling Green Police Policy and Procedures Manual.
All moved. Second.
Goodbye Commissioner Perigin, second bye Commissioner Bowles, Bailey, Mr.
As a good practice, we try to update our manuals annually, Police Policy and Procedures Manual for 2023 edition is before you tonight. I'd like to ask Lieutenant Colonel Penny Bowles to come up. to ask Lieutenant Colonel Penny Bowles to come up and give you, uh, another brief synopsis of what all these, uh, changes entail for, for this, this version. Penny?
Mayor Commissioners, um, it's a quite extensive packet, if you will, um, the, the main bulk of the, um, the policy manual is a revision of our communications section, uh, we are up for accreditation this year, so it's a great time to, uh, reexamine all of the policies and procedures and get everything in line, so I outlined everything for you in the first section, uh, which is basically a synopsis, most of these are just clearing up, uh, uh, to make sure our policies are congruent with our current practice and with law, um, so there will be a, a new policy manual, and all of our officers will receive the copy of the new policy manual, and will receive training to make sure that everybody's up to speed on, um, all of the, the new changes, it does look like a lot, uh, but really, it's, it's just cleaning up a lot of things as well. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Colonel Bowles, um, we appreciate your accreditation, um, has been, continued to be successful for our community, and appreciate your excellence and your expertise in continuing this, uh, bound, um, tradition for our Bowling Green Police Department. Commissioners?
All right, roll call, please.
Irigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right. Municipal Order Number, I'm gonna make sure I'm on the right, all right, Municipal Order Number 2023-114.
Municipal Order authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Downtown Redevelopment Authority, Inc., to lease Circus Square Park for Concerts in the Park.
So moved. Second.
By Commissioner Peri, uh, um, Hill, and second by Commissioner Perigin, Mr. Musel.
RA is still, uh, our main coordinator, uh, for Concerts in the Park, our first one's coming up June 23rd, this is our annual lease, uh, of Circus Square Park to DRA to hold these, uh, concerts, uh, we do it for $1, and, um, uh, we're gonna extend these into September, it looks like, this year, uh, DRA handles all of the fundraising, uh, they work with, uh, production company, uh, Lindsay Production Group, uh, who produces the sound and, uh, puts on a really good, uh, really good program, so, excited, these are coming up, uh, starting the 23rd, uh, what is that, two Fridays away, and Hillary worked on this, uh, lease and got it all put together, and is here, can answer any of your questions you might have.
We have our own concert in the park, uh, this Saturday, uh, we have, um, Government Cheese, right, and, um, Kentucky Head Hunters.
Head Hunters.
First time in 10 years they've played in our area, so come on out for a free, uh, park, or a free, uh, concert in the park on us as well. All right. No further questions, roll call, please.
Irigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-115.
Municipal Order approving the reappointment of A, Adam Shourds to the Housing Authority of Bowling Green.
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner, uh, Carlos Bailey, uh, this one was recommended, actually, he actually was reappointed, um, Mr. Marshall Gray stepped down, uh, probably less than a year ago, Adam Shrouds stepped in because, uh, Mr. Mark Gray took a job in Florida, and his appointment's already up, and so he would like to continue to serve, he's continued to serve well, and I want to continue to recommend him for this board. Okay. Roll call, please.
Irigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-116.
Municipal Order approving the appointments of Sharon Bronner and Connor Raymer to the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
So moved. Second.
This is, uh, by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill, uh, this is a joint appointment, uh, with the Judge Executive, Judge Gorman and I, uh, one is actually from the housing associations, it's not ours, but we approve it on our board, and that is, um, I'm sorry, that is Connor Raymer, and that's the Judge Executive, he did that, and then the second one is Ms. Sharon Bronner, and you'll recognize her, she's the new CEO of the Corvette Museum and a curator, and she's doing a wonderful job, she'll be a great addition to this board, um, I highly recommend this recommendation and addition to this board, and she will be replacing John Anderson, uh, that stepped down and is retiring. Okay. No questions, roll call, please.
Irigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-117.
Municipal Order approving the reappointment of Cortland Atkinson to the City County Board of Adjustments.
So moved.
By Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, uh, Cortland Atkinson would like to continue to serve, they've been serving well, uh, this is a reappointment, and I recommend their reappointment. Okay, no questions, re, roll call, please.
Irigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Coordinates Number BG 2023-9, second readings binding.
Ordnance Rezoning Real Estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 5.8834 acres from AG Agriculture RM4 multi-family residential, NHB Highway Business to RM3 townhouse multi-family residential, located at 0721 and 741 Plano Road, presently owned by Stan Dar and Brian Marr.
So moved. Second.
By Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill, this was a five and O at our last planning and zoning, unless there's questions or comments, none, roll call, please.
Irigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, and I think we're checking for comments, and there's none at this time, so our next scheduled meeting is June 20, 2023, and we adjourn, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.